Usually you have that section of your people.
Can you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the regular school committee meeting of Monday, October 24th, 2016. This is your notice that this meeting is being electronically recorded. I'm going to start with a special recognition tonight. So at this time, I'd ask Principal Rooney to come forward with Assistant Superintendent Lori Regan. Ms. Regan, as he's coming up, I'll turn it over to you.
So tonight, we have Matthew Abate and Allison Baird here, who are exceptional students and self-motivated learners here at Attleboro High School. They have excelled academically, both at the high school and on national standardized tests. By graduation, they will have completed a combined total of 17 AP courses. In 2016, Matthew was named AP Scholar with Distinction and Allison was named AP Scholar with Honor and recognition of their achievement on their AP exams. So congratulations to both of them on that. Both students were named National Merit Commended Scholars in the fall of 2016 for their high PSAT scores and they were, will both receive the Coplex Certificate of Mastery at graduation. So they have already quite the set of accomplishments between the two of them. Specifically, Matthew goes above and beyond academically. He has taken dual enrollment courses at St. John, at Johns Hopkins and Bristol Community College. And he also enjoys cross-country. He's on the winter and sprack, winter and spring track teams. He volunteers through the National Honor Society as well as the Leo Club. And when he graduates from high school, Matthew plans to pursue studies in actuarial, math, and science. So congratulations, Matthew. I have your certificate. Allison, she has been active at both our high school and the community, working towards building her resume. She's a member also of the cross-country team and she has served as captain in her junior and senior year. As a member of National Honor Society, she volunteers as student assistant for Norton Middle School Drama Productions. She has a true passion for improvisational comedy and has taken student and adult level national improvisational workshops for the last two years. She recently submitted sketches to Saturday Night Live and has been hired as a free run, as a freelance write for SNL. Allison is applying to schools and where she continue, where she can continue her education and pursue her love of comedy. So congratulations. Mr. Rooney?
Oh, thank you very much, Mrs. Regan. It's an absolute pleasure to be here tonight. You know, I find myself so many times in front of the committee with, with wonderful news and tonight is no exception. Both Matt and Ally are the epitome of what students at Attleboro High School really are all about and they're also student athletes as well. You know, this is a little bit of a preview for our spotlight meeting, which will be in November. We just rolled out the PBIS initiative at the high school this year. And our PBIS team has done a wonderful job of, of being able to put positive behavioral interventions and supports into the context of high school students. And they focused again on the word pride and we have the Pride Five initiative. And I think that these two could not be better examples of personal responsibility, respect, individuality, determination, and excellence. Ally just blew me away Friday. She did an interview with AAACS about her, about her opportunity with Saturday Night Live. And at the end of the interview, they talked about, they talked about, you know, do you have any advice for anyone? And she said that, and I'm paraphrasing, but she said, you know, I've never thought I'd be asked for advice. But she talked about how Attleboro High School had, had prepared her and that younger students should utilize all the opportunities that they have at the high school and ask questions and seek advice from, from their mentors. And just recently, Matt went to the Harvard Club to receive his Harvard Book Award that had been awarded originally at the end of his junior year. And his guidance counselor talked to me about spending the day with him and how, how humble he was, but how articulate and passionate he was about his education at Attleboro High School. So, you know, it, it really is just very redeeming for me, you know, to be a part of this system that has, has groomed these young people for success. So we're, we're very proud of both of you. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Wow. Matthew and Allison, congratulations. I mean, that's certainly an impressive list of accomplishments already. I, it's, I'm blown away by everything you've accomplished. I'm sure you guys will continue to, to make Attleboro proud as you've done, and Attleboro High School proud, and the Attleboro Schools proud. So congratulations on your accomplishments today. If there's anything you'd like to say, I'd love to hear from you.
Okay. Well, I do want to thank Superintendent Sawyer, who isn't here tonight, but I had the honor of meeting with him last week and I was so impressed with how welcoming he was even to a student such as myself whom he had never met. I think he and Mr. Rooney have done a great job creating an educational environment that really allows students to grow into what their potential may be. So thank you.
Yeah. I'd also like to thank, thank Mr. Sawyer. Yeah, obviously learned he wasn't going to be here today because of eye surgery. But yeah, it was really nice to meet him. Just, I really like getting recognition from the school within itself because it's kind of like a reflection of all the time and effort I've put into the school and what the school's giving back to me to make me the person I am. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. I'm sure we'll be hearing more from you this year and in the future. So keep up the good work and congratulations. Thank you. All right. At this point, I'll turn it over to our Student Advisory Council Representative, Ally DeRose. Ally?
Sorry. All right. So I'm just going to talk about around Attleboro Public Schools. I don't know. I guess it's not, but it's okay. So for the elementary schools, this is just for upcoming November and of October. There are parent evening concerts, conferences on Thursday, November 3rd. And there is no school, and this is district-wide on Veterans Day, which is Friday, November 11th. Moving on to the middle schools, again, just the no school on Veterans Day. And then the high school, there is a FAFSA day on Sunday, November 6th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. in the Bray Auditorium. So go to that because that's very important, especially for senior parents.
Ally, can you just explain what the FAFSA day is?
So it's a financial aid kind of day. So basically, there's going to be advisors there that are associated with the FAFSA. And they're going to help the senior parents and guide them onto how to fill out the FAFSA, just to get aid for college. And the FAFSA provides for financial aid. It gives you some grants, loans, et cetera, for college. So they're going to have representatives there to help them.
Thank you.
And then for community engagement, so Student Council and the class of 2018 are teaming up and they are having a community-wide pasta dinner on Thursday, November 11th. Tickets can be found if you just contact Ms. Pereira at K Pereira. So that's K P E R E I R A at attleborschools.com. And again, that's Thursday, November 10th. So there's going to be just pasta and meatballs, I'm pretty sure. And also, there's going to be baskets there. SAC made a basket. Surprisingly enough, it is a bliss basket. So, so you know, definitely go and choose that one. You can get two free half gallons. The tickets, I believe they're $10. They're, they're $7 or $10. I can double check on that for you. And then Blue Pride Night is Thursday, November 17th. And that's also a night where the class of 2021 will come out and there's going to be different clubs, organizations, sports, teams, everything like that, representatives from each. And everyone will have a table. There's going to be different subjects that you can talk to. I know the Foreign Language Department is there. And just to get a taste into high school, a taste of high school, you can sign up for the different clubs before you enter high school. That way, you're approached when you're in high school for it. And also, Aces Pack will have a table there as well. So that's going to be the next upcoming Aces Pack.
And where is that?
That's going to be at the high school, in the auditorium, in the pit area. So it's just going to kind of be all around. And for the big thing, the Blue Pride Palooza 2 is this Saturday. So that is sold out. We actually have sold 280 tickets. That's going to be from 6:00 to 11:00 and we're extremely excited for that. And for the SAC update, our tailgate fundraiser kind of took a turn for the worse. It rained, so we couldn't really tailgate outside because, you know, purposes. And, but that's okay because we have some new fundraisers coming up. Surprisingly enough, we have a Bliss fundraiser. That's going to be next Thursday, November 3rd. So everyone come and some of your bill will be donated to both SAC and Student Council. And then, yeah, I told you guys about the SAC basket and we are planning another fundraiser that may involve teachers coming out and performing their talents for the students. So that will be an interesting one. If anyone would like to participate, don't all jump at once. So that's all for SAC.
Thank you.
No problem.
Ally, where is the pasta dinner on the 10th going to be?
It's at the high school.
At the high school?
What was the date of the Bliss fundraiser?
It's going to be next Thursday, November 3rd.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Mr. Quinn?
Ally, there was a day or event at the high school, about a week or two ago, during PSATs, there was a little, some really interesting work that was going on for those not taking it. Can you talk a little bit about that experience?
Yeah. So PSAT day, if, for those of you who don't know, was an opportunity this year, it was the first time they allowed us to do this, was for seniors and juniors who weren't taking the PSA, PSATs. We got to choose something that was related to college and go into the community for the day instead of coming to school, get an excused absence for it. So there were things, I know one of my friends, she shadowed a pharmacist at CBS. Another one of my friends went on a tour of Sacred Heart. For me, I did something kind of outside of the box. I ended up going to the Boston Public Library. I went to the Career, the College Planning Center there and met with a representative who sat me down and helped me find scholarships and helped me fill those out. So that was very helpful as well. So a lot of students got things done. And when we reflected back on it in our classes, I think that we could all agree that the day was extremely useful, especially for the fact that students these days are so busy with after-school activities and even in school, there's really no time. So having that one day off during the week where, you know, on the weekends, it's tough because sometimes they're booked. But having that one day in the week where it's just, okay, a random Wednesday, it makes it easier to travel and do things that you wouldn't normally be able to do. So it was kind of a breath of fresh air for us because we got to do something that we might not have done otherwise. So, yeah.
Ally, would you say the day was highly relevant?
Yes. Oh, absolutely.
Probably was engaging, challenging, and a little bit inspiring?
I absolutely would say that. And I think it was, it was a fabulous day. And everyone loved it. And all the seniors thought it was awesome. And we would definitely like to see more days. I mean, I know that, just me and my friends have been talking about, that would be really cool if we can do on, like, MCAS days, you know, hint, hint, fun. So, yeah, but it was absolutely, it was very relevant and engaging.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Ally.
No problem.
Next on the agenda, we have approval of our minutes from our October 11th meeting. New discussion? All in favor? Moving on to our consent agenda, motion to approve a donation in the amount of $4,601.55 from the proceeds of the 2015 Rome Boulevard race to be evenly divided and used for athletic fee scholarships due to financial hardships and for pool improvements. Discussion? All in favor? Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $183.60 from the Adderall Varsity Booster Club to Attleboro High School. All in favor? Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $125.75 from Papa Gino's to the class of 2018 fundraiser. All in favor? Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $2,000 from the Feinstein Foundation, broken down as follows. Quello, $1,000. Hill Roberts, $1,000. All in favor? Motion to accept a donation of 13 sheets of laminate with an estimated value of $500 and 150 board feet of hardwood with an estimated value of $250 from David McCann to the CTE program at Attleboro High School. All in favor? Motion to accept a donation of $200 from the Attleboro Police Association to be used to purchase T-shirts for the walking school bus participants. All those in favor? Motion to accept a donation of a black four drawer filing cabinet to the Adderall Public Schools from Phil, Phil Cutsalis. All in favor? And that concludes our consent agenda. Moving on to the business agenda today, we're going to start with an update from representatives from the Willet, Willet Garden. So I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Regan.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to call up Ms. Margie Kelly and Kim Gattone to the table. The garden, I think, is a true believer of love for both Kim and Margie. They have been really working together and collaborating with members of the Willet School community as well as members of the Attleboro community for the past several months. And I think are here to share with you all of their new updates on what they have been doing with the garden and to share with you some pictures that they've done, a quick slideshow to share with all of you as well. So I'm not sure if you want to share the slideshow first and then?
I'm just going to do a quick intro.
Overview, okay.
Thank you. My name is Margie Kelly. I'm a parent at Willet. And I, I don't know how long ago it was, but we had an idea to build a garden. And we came here two seasons ago and asked for your blessing and we're thankful that you were in agreement. So just wanted to give you an update because we promised to do so. Right now, we're just closing the garden after our second season. It is a 2,000 square foot garden. We grow food and flowers. We, this is considered our outdoor classroom. It's on the Watson Ave side of Willet. I don't know if anyone is not familiar with it, but it's getting bigger all the time. And so it's, it's basically intended to give our kids and the, and their families a chance to sort of have an active experiential, experiential engagement with science and math and nutrition. So our team is our principal, Jeff Keaton, Kim Gattone, who's a grade one teacher and science teacher, and myself and another parent named Nicole Nelson. So we've had two successful growing and learning seasons. We have six raised beds where the kids plant, they plant seeds that they start in the classrooms. We also get some seedlings donated. And we do all, everything from tomatoes and peppers and such to, we've had a corn patch two years in a row and sun, a sunflower house and pumpkins. So we start our seeds in the spring and the teachers will help the kids decide what kind of crops they're going to do. They get to feel ownership about their crops and everybody tries a little something different. And then throughout the school, that time, that season, they get to water and weed the garden when class is in session. And they gather in the space. They do drawings. They do observations. Sometimes they'll write about what they're looking at. They'll look for bugs, things like that. And Kim can tell you more about that. We have a summer garden club and to take care of the garden in the summer. And we have, this year, we had, I think it's about 10 weeks and we have two families a week that have volunteered. So our whole community is involved. And they have, they agree as two families, I'm sorry, 20 families. But it's two families a week. And they come and water and weed and then they get to take the food and share it. We've had a couple of events and one of them was a picnic by the garden in July. And we had live music and we served food that we harvested from the garden to let people take, sample things. We also had, we have a school garden mentor from URI. And she came and did a little talk about herbs and how to make teas and things from herbs. In the fall, the kids have come back and they've helped to harvest. In the, we've had, I should say, we probably yielded about 300 pounds of food this summer. And most of that went home with the families that helped care for it. We also, probably about 60 pounds just in the last six weeks, went to our own cafeteria. And our, our cook, Christina, put that in our salads, on our pizza. We had a sample, yeah, we had a sample station in the cafeteria. I should say, we don't use any pesticides, anything like that in the garden. It's all chemical-free. And so we're really thrilled to be able to take it right from the one side of the building and bring it in and wash it up to eat it fresh. So, and I think the kids are really, really dig that. Another thing we did, we have, we grew a bunch of pumpkins. And they're really big. And we, and Kim took them out around the schools, to every classroom. And the kids got to guess the weight, do the estimate. And then the closest ones got to bring the pumpkins home, right? So, so we've done, in terms of the way this connects with all our goals in, in the school and the community, we've had, the garden club is some way to engage our whole, all our families, not just the kids, but their families as well. The classes spend time in the garden and we're trying to do, we're going to hope to do more things like the summer evening picnic, where the people can come during the high season when everything's growing to see what we actually do there. In the physical space, we now have a fenced and gated garden. We have a small tool shed that we bought from the, the kids here in the carpentry program. So we're proud to have our shed over there. And then this summer, we built a compost station with the help of the Bristol County Sheriff's Department. So that was amazing because it was a big job. And then we've done some, to support the programs, we sell dedication bricks. And I think some of you are familiar, we have a pathway in the center of the garden. And people can dedicate a brick to their kids, like whatever year they're graduating or to grandma, whatever. So we've, we've sold 94 bricks so far. And that's an ongoing sale to support our activity. We also have T-shirts for sale. This is our new one. The vegetable revolution right there. In the spring, we're, we're, we've started to sell organic seeds from a farm in Vermont. And we also get support from the PTO, which is sort of our overarching organization. And, and we've also started to look into school garden grants, things like that, from like Whole Foods and some other organizations. So that's sort of the overview. And we have also had a ton of donors in the community that have given us soil, compost, wood chips, a lot of it for, for nothing, which is amazing. Or they've given us in-kind services, installing the bricks, any of the heavy lifting. The Attleboro Farmers Market has been a huge support. We've had a booth there several times to just promote our activity and sell and raise money. And then the, the University of Rhode Island Master Gardener Program, I actually got my Master Gardener certificate with them. And they have a school garden grant program. So they give us a lot of technical support and also free plants and things every once in a while. And we get a lot of, their team will come out and help us whenever we need it. So we're really grateful for that. So I guess we're going to...
So all of these things that Margie just presented to you, you'll actually see in a brief video that will kind of show you from, everything from breaking ground two years ago in the spring of 2015, to the cafeteria and serving over 50 pounds of food to the students of Willet. students of Willett.
Okay.
So that was just kind of a brief overview of what we've done in the last two years at Willett Elementary School. We just kind of wanted to let you know what our short-term and long-term goals are moving forward in the process. Our short-term goals for Willett and the garden over the next two years would be to develop a garden speaker series. So now that the students have had the opportunity to work in the garden and to plant their own plants and watch them grow from a seed and watch the life cycle, we're looking to bring in speakers such as a beekeeper, a farmer, so to discuss pollination and the need for it. Bring in a farmer to discuss how weather might impact the production of plants and the importance of sustainability in organic farming. A soil scientist to talk about healthy soil and not healthy soil, a nutritionist to discuss why it's so important to eat healthy, and an ecologist to talk about the impact on our environment and cost. So we're also looking to develop a compost program. We have our compost bins built, but now we need to work on putting something in them. So we're looking to work together with the lunchroom and cafeteria staff and students and one day a week, take some item from their trays and see that it goes into a composting station. And then have our, maybe our fourth grade students help us by bringing that out and putting it in the proper place to start that composting so that over the next year, we'll be able to utilize that again, so that they can see again the usefulness of the food and how it goes back in to feed the other plants. We're looking to develop more connections between garden and curriculum, as always. We're always looking for that core curriculum connection. So we're looking to continue to develop with that. And we're looking to expand the garden club to be around active group of parents and individuals with monthly meetings, so that we're planning ahead, rather than in the spring just starting. We're looking to plan and implement a pick your own veggies program on summer Saturdays for the Willett community, because we found that we had so much to harvest this year. But we want to make sure that people are taking advantage of that in the Willett community, as well as anyone that's willing to come. So we were going to publish or publicize that we're going to be doing a pick your own Saturday. When we see a large harvest coming in, we'll have people come between certain hours to come pick from the garden, any community member. And then, long-term, so we're looking ahead maybe five years, to develop more opportunities for learning in the summer garden. So much happens over the summer, but yet we're not in school. So they have that short six-week period, we close the garden, they learn how to, you know, prepare it for winter or winterize it. And they see the growth, but they don't see it in its full bloom, a lot of the times in the summer. Students don't have that opportunity. So we're looking to develop maybe workshops led for the students that they could sign up for, as well as parents or families, if they'd like to do that. And then just moving ahead, we're looking to develop and promote our vision for Attleboro Schools and create teaching gardens at every school, any school that's willing to participate. We'd be more than happy to try and help to promote that, so that Attleboro could potentially become a garden district where kids can graduate with lifelong skills and learn how to grow their own food sustainably and become stewards of the environment moving forward. So.
Thank you both very much. I remember a couple of years back when you came in with the plans and, you know, the excitement of what it was gonna be. And as a Willett parent, seeing it the last couple of years, how it's grown, how the kids have really taken an interest in it. And all the good work that's come out of it is great. It's, you know, what we're looking to do in all the schools. So thank you. And I think, you know, congratulations as well are in order for what you guys have done. So thanks again. Mr. Gettys?
I think one of the points that really needs to be emphasized, I happened to stumble upon the garden during our capital improvement tours of the schools. I think it was early in the spring, a cold and rainy day when you guys were cleaning it out from the winter. And there were probably 40 or 50 students, parents, teachers there doing the work. Again, cold rainy day. I know I don't go out and work in my yard on a cold and rainy day. And that there were that many people there and that the students were really enjoying it and really engaged in it was just incredible to see. So to echo Mr. Withers' point, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson?
It's a great success and you should all be very proud of yourselves. I love the fact of just getting the kids sometimes out of the classrooms and, you know, put some dirt in their hand and just, you know, have them interact and see that there's more out there that they really need to get in touch with, so.
That hands-on engagement and involvement is very key.
Mrs. Doris?
Yeah, we've been talking here for a while now about experiential learning and this is what a perfect example. So the fact that the Willett community and the students can benefit from this, you know, thank you. This is amazing.
Mr. Quinn? So as somebody who started their own garden for the first time this year, what is the key to going pesticide-free? Because like, the photos there are just incredible. So what's, any advice for our?
Well, it'd be a class. We can do a class.
Be a summer workshop.
But in all seriousness, this is wonderful to see. And what this seems like is that there's a trend where Attleboro's greening, right? We're doing a lot of solar projects. The high school's got an incredible, you know, botany program that also grows, starts to produce one of the tomato plants in that garden was from there, the one that thrived. So it's about, you know, you provide a lot of infrastructure here to kind of build off that. And how do we start to align and collaborate and bring it all together? Thank you for doing what you do and I'm really looking forward to seeing how this can kind of grow and spread. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Don't forget your t-shirt.
Yeah.
What's that?
It's great.
It's awesome.
Next on the agenda, we have our personnel update. And then I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Regan to introduce our new Director of Personnel. As she's getting ready for that, just to kind of refresh everyone's memory on how we got here, there are four central office administration positions under the superintendent that are currently unfilled. There was, those are the Director of Personnel, the Director of Instructional Technology, the Director of External Engagement, and the Director of Student Services. Director of Student Services had been filled in recent years, but with the departure of that employee recently, Mr. Sawyer, in looking at his administration, determined that he thought the best fit for the strengths of his staff would be to bring in a Director of Personnel to supplement the skills of those we already have in place. This is a position that has historically been filled in Attleboro, but for the recent years had not been, as the Director of Student Services position was filled instead. So that's kind of a background on how we got there and what this position is. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Regan to introduce our new hire and to tell us about her.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'd like to introduce Julianne Singer as our new Director of Personnel. So the process for our search committee, we posted the position, there were 38 applicants that had applied for the job. We set out to interview eight people and six actually came to the interview. There were two people that withdrew at the very last minute. From those six total people, we sent up three finalists to Superintendent Sawyer and myself. The initial search committee included Ms. Adeline B., who is the AEA president, Mr. Joseph Connor, principal at Wamsetta Middle School, Ms. Ivana Maderas, who is our special education director, Jean Hickox, who is the vice principal at the high school, and myself. Through that process, we were very impressed with Julianne's ability to engage with both committees. She was, she wanted to learn about what we wanted in Attleboro and how the Director of Personnel Services could better support us and our endeavors here as educators. And being in this position as Assistant Superintendent for the short months that I have been, I quickly realized the amount of time that personnel requires in order to, just in order to make sure that we are providing the right type of services and the right type of information to over, an organization with over 800 employees in it, so, on a daily basis. So with that said, I'd like to highlight some of Julianne's experience for you. She has her master's in organizational psychology and she has held several leadership positions in the community, as well as, she's also a parent in the Attleboro community. She has worked in human resources or personnel in large organizations through most of her career. So that knowledge is very welcome, especially for this organization, because going from one complex organization to another, a complex organization will be, she'll be able to provide us with some insight and guidance on moving forward. She also has four years of experience as a school nurse, so she is very familiar with the day-to-day operations of a school. And she is going to be, I believe, an asset to us as we start to really unpack the educator evaluation system and look at ways that we can better support administrators in the district, as well as teachers, moving forward with that tool. So I'm very pleased to announce Julianne Singer as the new Director of Personnel Services. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
No.
I first want to just thank Superintendent Sawyer and Assistant Superintendent Regan for awarding me this opportunity. And to the interview committee, someone who are here tonight, who, for their time, and they're very thoughtful and very thorough questions during the interview process. I'm very excited to be working with an amazing leadership team in the central office, as well as serving a very passionate school community here in Attleboro. So I'm looking forward to bringing my years of experience here and making a positive impact. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. I think something that Assistant Superintendent Regan touched on is the amount of time that personnel issues has taken up with our Assistant Superintendents over the past many years. It's something that, since I've been on the school committee for the last, over three years, or about three years, excuse me, we've talked about many times. And how those personnel duties taken away from the teaching and learning responsibilities that the Assistant Superintendent should really be focusing on. So being able to fill this position now, I think, is going to be a huge asset to our employees, to have that personnel expertise, but also to our students by freeing up our Assistant Superintendent to do what that position is meant to do. And I think, Ms. Singer, your expertise or your experience in complex organizations, as was mentioned, will be helpful, as well as that experience in an organization other than a school, I think, to bring some outside experience in will be good to our administrators as well as to our employees. Mr. Gettys?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think something that Mrs. Regan didn't touch on, but every time I asked her about how the search was going, she pointed out that this was a competitive candidate pool. And I think from such a competitive candidate pool, to get someone with the external experience you have, but still a great institutional knowledge about where they're going into, that's a very rare combination. So I'm excited to see that benefit the district. I also think, along the lines of what the chairman was just saying, I think we should also thank Ms. Regan, Mr. Fattato, and Ms. Maderas, who with the vacancy of the Director of Student Services position, will be taking on some of those additional responsibilities within their jobs as well. So that step up to the plate is absolutely also appreciated. So thank you.
Mr. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, to echo what Mr. Gettys says a little bit, I am elated that Dave and his administration prioritize this position. I've been advocating for this for years. Crazy for a school system or any corporation this size with over 800 employees, not to have a personnel manager is not doing any justice. For the employees that work for the district, as well as the administration that's been trying to pick up the pieces. And to kind of break away a little, Tom, you know, not only do they fill the position, but this was kind of like, I don't know, it's kind of like ordering a vanilla rice cream and they bring it to the table and now it's got hot fudge on it. We're framing a cherry because she's a true professional. I've got to work with her for a couple of years. She's a true dedicated professional. She knows this trade very well. She knows Attleboro very well. So I'm very glad to have you. Glenn, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Larson?
I think we're all thrilled to finally have an HR Director again. I know it's one of the first conversations I heard Mr. Tyler talking about in my first term also. And so we've been definitely kicking this around for a long time. So finally to be able to do this is great for the district. And I think it's even better, the fact that we're getting the candidate that we're getting, because I am truly looking forward to working with Julie and enjoyed it in the past. And I know she's gonna do a great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, again, welcome. Look forward to seeing you back in this room again in the future. And congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. And next we'll call up Principal Connor and his team from Wamsetta. I don't know if Principal Connor, you or Assistant Superintendent Regan want to do the introductions?
I'll do the introductions. Happy to. Thank you, the school committee, for allowing to showcase some of the work we're doing at AMS, WMS, sorry. I want to thank Mr. Lamore and the many staff members who have joined us tonight. I'm going to introduce the teachers individually as they give their parts of the presentation. And although most of the people you see in the back there are going to be presenting tonight, I think it's important to note that one teacher who's here is just here to cheerlead for her colleagues. So thank you, Mrs. Debold, for coming. And, you know, it's a little thing. And, you know, it's a little thing, but I think it speaks really well to the collaborative culture and the teamwork of the staff, who, you know, somebody knew we were all coming and going to be on TV tonight, and said, "I'll come, I'll, I got your back." So, uh, that's what's about. This type of presentation is new for us, as we have usually presented SIPs as a level. We used to do the middle school, School Improvement Plan as a level. Uh, I hope you find our effort to outline a few of the key initiatives at Wamsetta more informative than the previous method, but I don't want you to be surprised, there are going to be some parallels that you're going to see between our presentation and the one that was delivered by Quello earlier in the month. Again, I hope this isn't too repetitive for you, but I think this is a sign of, a sign of successful alignment and coordination amongst the middle schools. And you can feel free to stop us at any point if you have any questions. All right? So, uh, we're here to highlight just a few of the initiatives at Wamsetta. Initiatives that represent the application of the District Strategic Plan to a local school context. Uh, the three overarching, overarching goals of the strategic plan, which are personalization, enhanced learning experiences, and greater community engagement, as well as the district learning priorities of engaged students, infusing learning with, uh, with technology, greater personalization of learning, and providing greater opportunities for experiential study, have been distilled into an improvement plan that is endorsed by the Wamsetta Administration, School Council, instructional leader team, uh, instructional leadership team, and most importantly, our teachers. To highlight the first of the initiatives we're going to talk about, I'm presenting Julie James, who is our fifth grade ELA teacher, and Amy Sanford, who is sixth grade ELA, and they're going to talk about our multi-year initiative with Universal Design for Learning.
Hello. Universal Design for Learning, or UDL, is a set of principles for curriculum development that give all individuals equal opportunities to learn. It is actually based on architecture. It has its roots in architecture, and the Americas with Disabilities Act, basically the idea of moving barriers so that all people can access, at the time, buildings, except that this time, it's all children can access the curriculum. Within UDL, there is a variability of learning, and that provides a blueprint for creating instructional goals, methods, materials, and assessments that work for everyone. Not a single one-size-fits-all solution. There's flexible approaches that can be applied and customized to individual needs. And I'm going to scroll back again, I'm sorry I missed one, but based on a more advanced understanding of neuroscience concerning how people learn, and a lot of what UDL does is based on brain-based research. So they're rooted in neuroscience. Through this study, it was revealed that there are three primary brain networks. So there is the affective network, which is the why of learning, the recognition network, which is the what of learning, and the strategic networks, which are the how of learning. So knowing how the brain works and what portions of the brain are lit up during a lesson is really unreal. They showed us many examples of how the brain reacts to certain stimuli, so it really is amazing. And variability of learners is the norm, just like, um, you know, one size doesn't fit all. That's the same thing with our learning community, that everybody comes to the table with different learning styles, different beliefs, and that we need to start adapting for that. Currently, we're in year three of the multi-year commitment. Myself and my members of our UDL team have worked very collaboratively together, and it's been a great experience. The training was provided by CAST, which is the Center for Applied Special Technology. And what we're doing is, we are learning all about these particular principles, and we are focusing now to shifting and educating our staff as a whole. So we basically started the process with us going into our classrooms, trying out the principles, creating trials for ourselves, collaborating with one another, and seeing where we needed to adjust what worked, what perhaps didn't work as, as well. And so now we feel that we would like to go out and work with our other colleagues and spread out, and basically spread the principles that we've learned. And we are, again, going to be sharing best practices through trials, monthly tips, grade level meetings, faculty meetings. Every month, we have a tip of the month on our door in our mailroom, so teachers can come and look at the tip of the month, try it out, talk to us. Each and every one of us, our doors are open. It's just a very collaborative process. We don't claim to be the experts on it, but, you know, we do feel that we have a lot to share with our colleagues, and we're willing to do so. And it's been, for, I think, for all of us, it's been a real eye-opening experience about how we look at our students in the classroom, and really kind of, you know, breaking down some of those things that we might have thought, some of those beliefs that we had early in our, in our careers, and now sort of it's a, it's a shift, it's a mindset. So it's very exciting to see, and it's been extremely positive, I think, would you say, in our building, where it's, people have been very receptive to it. So it's, it's really great.
And last year, we started to meet with teachers at the grade levels and faculty meetings, and we've really, and this year, we're taking off with it. These are a couple pictures from, they're all fifth grade classrooms. The one on the left is actually my classroom, and we were using this computer program called Kahoot, and so a lot of our teachers were infusing technology to increase engagement. And so instead of having a discussion with the kids, where I ask a question, they raise their hand, I call in one student, I get the answer, and I know if one student has it or not. Every student can answer the question, so I know. And then we still stop and talk about it, but then it gives me a report later, and I can tell who got the question right and who got the question wrong, and I can then go back later for interventions and other things. So we're trying to utilize technology that will provide us information and be engaging for the kids. They were, they see it as a game. It is fun and learning, and I'm seeing it as a learning experience. So that's the one on the left.
Can I ask, Ally, a question?
Oh, yeah. Have you used it?
It's actually kind of a statement, but I actually had the opportunity to play Kahoots in my AP Statistics class. I can tell you that it was very, it was awesome. Like, I thought it was so much fun, and it, like you just said, it was so engaging, because not only do we view it as an awesome way to learn, but it served as kind of like a competition for the kids, because, I mean, you have a first place, a second place, and, you know, you just laugh about it, but it was a lot of fun, and I can say that if more teachers incorporated it in the classrooms, that'd be pretty cool.
So we're spreading the word around Wamsetta, and it's really, the kids are having fun, and I'm getting real information, and real learning is happening. The middle one is non-technology, but I have kids in charge with, they're kind of running a piece of the lesson. They're owning the lesson. This is just a vocabulary review. There was a little bit of charades going on, so we're incorporating movement into it. You can see all those hands up, and when the kids are in front of other kids, the engagement goes up. So we're trying to empower them and put them in charge of their learning, and, and try to see ourselves as facilitating the learning, when they're, it's their learning. And then the one on the right are the kids using Chromebooks, and you can see Chromebooks and science textbooks. So this was a research project in a science classroom in fifth grade, and we incorporated choice. So instead of just, in the past, when we would have used the textbook for them to get the information, now they're able to go to different websites and have that right in the classroom, by having the Chromebooks right in there. So there's, um, we have two Chromebook carts that we are all sharing, and very nicely we're sharing that, but we're all definitely incorporating that. I don't really do that on purpose. But, but basically, we wanted to show you some how of technology is really getting our kids excited about learning and, and doing different things.
Mr. Caddis?
And the fifth graders are also the junior conservation commissioners, correct? So this is supplementing their field experience with the Conservation Agent for the city?
Absolutely.
Mr. Quinn, do you have a question?
Uh, no, just kind of a, more of a point of clarification for the Kahoots, for those adults who may like, so if you've ever been at a restaurant, you know, they have the trivia games at the restaurant, you can put the name in. It's, uh, it's very similar to that, but there's like a lot of cool graphics, and it's very like exciting, and they, they kind of build up, so it's a very intense atmosphere from the, in a good way, from the classes that I've been to.
It's building on that positive competitiveness that really, you know, gets some kids really excited.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. I'm going to bring up Patricia Dawson and Tova Stevenson. Talk about our second initiative. Turn it over to Mr. Lemoore for this one.
Ally, did you ever mention to the committee that you are a Wamsetta grad?
I am a Wamsetta grad.
She is a Wamsetta grad.
And I loved it.
So our second initiative is Community Partnerships in Relevant Learning, and at Wamsetta, we're very fortunate to have a great number of community partners. The list includes, but is not limited to, Attleboro High School, Bishop Feen and the Migos Program, Horace Mann, which provides student incentives. In fact, currently, Horace Mann is offering a raffle for students who are earning points through the Accelerated Reader Program, the Finestone Foundation, the Lions Club, the Boston Sports Museum, the Wamsetta PTO, the Attleboro Public Library, Police and Fire Department, Project Connect, and the Attleboro YMCA. We're also very fortunate to have a longstanding relationship with Sensata Technologies, and through the years, the company has donated technology, hosted professional development workshops, and provided tours of their facilities. Employee volunteers from Sensata continue to facilitate the robotics club and sponsor the robotics competition at Wamsetta. Wamsetta's most recent partnerships include Junior Achievement, which is held after school, the Boys and Girls Scouts, and the Attleboro Council on Aging, and we have welcomed two senior citizens into our volunteer program at our school. One of the goals of our community partnerships is to increase opportunities for curriculum relevance and, moving forward, provide opportunities for experiential learning. So as a segue, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Stevenson, one of our art teachers, and Mrs. Dawson, one of our fifth grade science teachers.
Good afternoon. I'm here to talk about the Junior Conservation Commission Nurse Program. The fifth graders at Wamsetta are lucky that to have had some amazing people in our community come together over many years of building ideas and building programs, where we've taken a program that was maybe one or two classes a year into a program this year, that the students will have eight days of experiential learning, where they will be in the field, out in the Atabon Society at Oak Knoll, they'll be in the Wamsetta grounds, which has a protected vernal pool. They'll be out there, they'll be examining animals in a classroom setting, and being, doing all kinds of hands-on lessons. We are lucky to have had the support of Oak Knoll, Chris Hitchner as an instructor, and Lauren Gordon as a co-teacher, and as a activities liaison, as I would say, at Oak Knoll. We have had another great turn of events, where over the five years that I've been working with Oak Knoll, we, this year, we came upon, uh, last year, actually, Tara Martin, who had a vision to bring some of the ideas of what the Conservation Commission in Attleboro does for the community to the students. Her vision is large. She's hoping someday that some of these students will become volunteers at, in, at the high school level, and take these experiences to each of the middle schools. Right now, we are lucky to be the pilot school for the program. We're hoping it can continue to grow. We're lucky to have Mayor Dumas's support, Superintendent Sawyer, Mr. Connor, and Mr. Lemoore, for giving fifth graders their expertise and assistance to get these programs off the ground. And also for the staff at Wamsetta for being supportive and making the logistics of the program possible. We've been able to build these relationships, and with each step we took, it seemed like we moved in the right direction, making, implementing this rare opportunity for our students to become experiential learners, to help them make decisions that will build on their ability to have values and responsibility and ownership of preserving their community. I have some really good quotes from the students I'd like to share. After their first day, we had a kickoff event where we had the mayor, the superintendent, everyone there, and one of the comments was, "I have a big wetland in my backyard. I always thought it was just sitting there doing nothing. However, because of today, I now know that it is very important and necessary for the health of the earth." Another student said, "When I saw so many who came out just for us, I knew it would be great." It was really great. I got to pat a box turtle. Another student, she really sums up the program. "I really liked when we got into groups, and we got different items, and we had to say how one of the items resembled a wetland. My group and I got a sponge. Also, I loved how we got to touch a turtle. I've never seen a boxing turtle before. Also, I loved how in the other class, we got to pretend to be commissioners and debate whether or not a road was okay to be built in the middle of a wetland." Al Gore stated at his Climate Reality Conference that "we need to remember the sense of awe that nature has given humanity. It's something that should be preserved." We have been enabled by everyone working together to come up with a science component, a social studies component, and now, because of our, our teacher at Wamsetta, we're going to add the A into our STEM and make it steam.
Yes, thank you. When Trish first came to me about adding an art piece to this unit and this collaboration with the fifth grade, I immediately thought of Conrad Martins, who was Darwin's Artist in Residence on the Voyage of the Beagle, and I thought, "How great if we went on a nature walk and started to do some plain air drawing from observation of the flora and fauna in the surrounding land to Wamsetta, and the kids could do drawings and try to classify them, take notes, and then we could do a printmaking project where they could do multiples, and we could bind them together into books." So all the fifth graders would have their own field guide to the land surrounding where they go to middle school. So that's, that's our plan with going forward. And in addition to the other experiential learning piece that the art department really provides is the showing of work. First, with the collaborative communities with the Smarts Program at the Fuller Craft Museum, which is fantastic for the kids to see their work in an actual art museum, and it's a nice, um, working with the communities for that. And then also at the end of the year, yeah, we don't have a picture of that one, but at the end of the year, we have our annual Arts Night in collaboration with the band, and the students math the work, they're involved in the showing, and it provides a really authentic assessment, as well as the already UDL-infused discipline of art gives them the experiential learning of showing their own artwork, showcasing with the community, in addition to just showing the extraordinary talent that we have at Wamsetta.
Thank you, Stevenson. For the third initiative, which is really two initiatives that I've rolled into one, I'd like to bring up Ms. McGee, who's our adjustment counselor, and Mr. Kelly, who's a fifth grade math teacher. Karen, will you start us with PBIS?
Hi. We've just begun on our long-term commitment to PBIS. We had nine faculty members be trained for two days earlier this school year, and I think we have four more days throughout the year. We're really excited. It's a preventative approach to teach students about and to recognize good behavior throughout the school day. We're really proud of our positive culture. I did a lot of conversations we had last year with staff and students. We discussed how important it would be to continue to promote that culture, and PBIS, we're hoping, is going to be a really central part of that. PBIS will establish behavioral expectations, teach all those students about those expectations, just like we very concretely teach about the math and the sciences. We're going to break down the behaviors in that way, so we'll develop those lessons to teach them, and we'll also develop systems to recognize positive behaviors. We've started to work on a few things, even though we're just at the very beginning of this process. We launched our behavioral expectations at the beginning of this school year with all the grades. You can see some of the positive words up there, as well as we also, in some grades, have started to work on some of the behavior incentives. And on one of our sixth grade teams, they've, um, working on a weekly incentive, and we've already seen great growth. So it's a team of 58 students, and they're on their, we're into our fourth week of it. In the third week, so three weeks ago, 23 students earned the incentive. The second week of it, 31 students earned the incentive, and last week, 41 students earned the incentive. So it's the king of outside, if it was a nice day, you know, it might be something in the classroom, it'll change throughout the year, but we already quickly saw improvement in the classroom behavior. So we're really excited to begin this process. We're hoping, just like with UDL, if we make the long-term commitment, we'll be able to sustain it and really see a positive impact with our students. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Okay. So, I'm here as a team member from Wamsetta, and basically, I'm going to talk through the process of where our ILT team is now, and how we got to this peer-to-peer learning. I'm not going to give an overview on this and SIPs, you've all listened I'm not going to give an overview on this, and you've all listened to that. So basically, what an IL team does is they get a SIP at the end of a school year, and they meet, or at the beginning of a school year, and they look at what those goals are in that SIP throughout the year for the school. The ILT team then determines how far we are into those goals, what's been met, what we need to do, and then, once we meet those goals, how do we sustain them or how do we push beyond those goals? So our ILT team was charged with looking at the SIP last year and started looking at what action steps we needed to take towards reaching our SIP. And we started having conversations, and teachers were coming into the ILT, the leadership team, saying, you know, "I see an indicator of this in the eighth grade ELA class. I see an indication of this in grade five math. I see this, I see that, I see that." So the ILT team, through the conversations, started, determined that they started seeing pockets of pieces of our SIP happening throughout the building. So we then had a plan that says, great, we don't really need any outside help. We see really good, engaging material here, we see challenging material here, we see inspiring material, it's throughout the building. So now we had a great idea. We have basically what we need in the school. Now our challenge has started. So how do we get all of our people up to speed with observing what's happening, understanding, and then putting that into practice? So the ILT team developed a structure, and this was internal, the team came up with this, that they wanted to observe their fellow teachers. And while I'm teaching a math class, I can't simultaneously be in fifth grade and eighth grade at the same time. So I need to have somebody come into my room to free me up so I can go watch an eighth grade teacher. Again, this became more challenging with the removal of the coaches, which was one of my formal positions, and we've lost some ILAs at Wamsetta, so there was not too many external staff we could bring in. The ILT team determined that they would donate a planning period. So I would give up one of my planning periods to go cover whatever content area it was, science, math, ELA, while that teacher went and observed another teacher in another area. And we feel that by doing this, and this was started last year, throughout this year, that our staff is very excited about this because there are some wonderful opportunities for learning within our school from staff to staff, that we're going to learn from each other, and that is going to help our culture. Staff among staff, it's definitely going to help our students. So that's where our ILT is now with the idea of peer-to-peer learning.
Thank you, Richard.
Questions?
I just wanted to commend you on that peer-to-peer learning. I think that's been a big, positive trend that I've been seeing on education, social media, and it's awesome, as it usually is, that Attleboro is getting out ahead of the curve. You know, if you're on Twitter, or if some of your colleagues are on Twitter, the hashtag #ObserveMe will provide a lot of tools to support it. There's also something called the pineapple chart, which is pretty interesting, too, that I've been seeing a lot of teachers using. But I think it's wonderful when the organic bottom-up type observation and that collaborative culture, combined with what you're doing with the students with PBIS, really creating a positive culture, a culture of learning, not just for the students, but the teachers as well. So it's really commendable.
Thank you. I hope, first thanks to everyone who came out to present or support the presenters. We hope we've shown the direction of improvement planning and action at Wamsetta, and that it's coherently and appropriately aligned with the goals of the committee and the district. And on behalf of everyone who's here and the staff, we're excited about our work going forward. We have our challenges, they are numerous and varied, but I think we're centering in on a few high-leverage things, that we're going to try to maintain a narrow focus over a long time, which is not the way, maybe, we've always done business. Our focus tends to be more broad and shifts from year to year. At times in the past, we owe a lot to the school committee for providing us the opportunity, and Mr. Sawyer and Mrs. Regan's leadership, to provide us the opportunity to really concentrate on a few things over time, rather than, you know, a million things in a year. And that takes the patience of a school committee like this one to accomplish. So thank you for allowing that environment to take place. And we're happy to answer any questions, anybody who wants to.
I would just like to comment, because I don't want it to go unnoticed as part of your presentation, but I'm moved and I'm impressed with how you found a way to get around and cover for each other so that you could get what you knew needed to get done, done. And I appreciate that effort. So thank you very much.
That was a group effort, whole school.
But, I mean, to, you know, it's one thing to talk about, you know, we could do this, we could do this, but you took it to that next level, so.
We were successful in having teachers visit teachers as part of the UDL process, as they observe their trials. And that got us all thinking, we need to do more of this, we need to do more of this. And then, actually, I was away at a professional development, so the ILT met without me. And I said, listen, this was on our SIP. We plan to use the coaches to do this. You know, and I wasn't even there. I said, you guys figure this out. We've got to get people into other people's classrooms. And they figured out a structure that we can use and that we're going to roll out in the next couple of months. So despite the personnel issues, we're still going to give this a go, and we're really hopeful for the results of this work.
No, I think we all knew there was going to be great challenges going into this year, and I really applaud you guys for stepping it up and finding a way around it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the whole team. I think this was, you know, another impressive presentation, I think. Doing the school presentation separately this year, while there might be some overlap, I think it's impressive to see what the individual schools are doing, the hard work, the benefits to the students and the educators. So thank you for putting it together. Thank you for the work you're doing that you highlighted. Shows that the students of Wamsetta at Attleboro are in a good place, so thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Regan.
Mr. Fattato. Fiscal Year 2016 Closeout Budget Transfer Report. So you're up. I understand, though, that, you know, the report is not ready at this point, correct?
Correct.
So can we, you're on the floor, so.
It's complete, right? I just wanted to go over it, make sure that the numbers tied out, so that it will be here for the next school committee meeting. I apologize for that not being tonight.
So what can we, what is the report that you're going to be presenting?
It's a large spreadsheet, very large spreadsheet, showing all the transfers throughout the whole year, so the committee can see how the budget moved through the year, as well as the cover sheets for each budget transfer, so you can see the specifics on the account. And it just basically explains the whole year, in addition to the transfers that were approved by the committee to be made at the end of the closeout.
Mr. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Jim. While Mark's in the seat, I'm wondering if he can actually give the committee an update on the boilers over at Willet. I mean, what's going on?
Yeah, we, you know, as we do every year, we go through our equipment prior to a season. So in the early spring, we go through our air conditioning units, and in the late summer, early fall, we go through our heating units. We inspect them, test them, run them, to make sure that they're ready for what's coming up. Unfortunately, at Willet, one of the units sprung up pretty significantly. Again, the problem with the units there is the capsule, the boiler itself, the walls are fatigued and are known to, you know, fail pretty significantly, which is a little unusual for a boiler. But that particular model, that particular year, had these problems on a pretty widespread basis. So the boiler failed, began leaking pretty severely. You know, and we're working to, again, get the Scotch tape out and fix it.
Is there a plan with the boiler? Or is it, I know it was mentioned last week, funds being available for capital projects, boilers. Was Willet one of them, or was it Willet not?
Yes, Willet, the mayor's office made a proposal to the city council contingent on the final certification of the fiscal year 16 funds being, the carryover funds being certified. And in that proposal, the Willet boilers were part of that, as were Hill Roberts and Haven Fine Boilers, two air conditioning units at Hill Roberts, an air conditioning unit, new air conditioning unit at Willet, the facade at Studley, and I want to say some other roof work at Vernon and Wamsetta.
So hopefully.
Temporary roof work.
Temporary roof work, correct.
So hopefully, if the council approves the recommendation, then we only have to do a temporary ban date at Willet this year.
Depending on the timing, that's correct, yeah. We would go forth with, what we would need to do is put the equipment on the street for bidding purposes. We have the installer, who's off of the state contract, who we've already, you know, given a heads up to. And, you know, do those projects as quickly as we possibly can.
Mr. Quinn?
What's the estimated turnaround time for being able to get somebody in to install these types of projects? I'm sure there are other, you know.
They have other business.
Right, right. As I'm learning that when you, you know, in education, you think, you know, a two-day turnaround often turns into two weeks plus, but I can't imagine what it is for a boiler.
Yeah, no, as soon as the funds become available, we would, again, first appeal to the installers to get in their schedule. I don't know what their schedule is. Obviously, the later you get into the heating season, the worse it's going to be, because they'll pile up. There'll be some relief to that queue, because we have to go out in the street anyway for the equipment. So that bidding time will consume some of that cycle within their schedule. I don't know how much. Once they get to work, it'll happen pretty quick. We've done a project with these folks before at Studley, and I've done other work with them in other places before. They're very, very good. They do amazing work, but we need to get it on the schedule to get it done.
Is there anything unique about the building or the entry points for the boilers that would prove to this process being problematic for any of the builders?
Yeah, Willet's going to be a challenge.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, we're going to have to cut the boilers in the building and then get them out in pieces. So that's going to add time and cost to that process. There's no, there's no opening in the building big enough to remove the boilers, as is, so they'll have to be chopped up and.
What about getting the new one in?
The new ones are significantly smaller.
Okay. Does that work, is that in the capital improvement proposal?
That's been in our proposal for at least a decade.
That's what I thought, just to make sure. Mr. Guinness?
That was my question, thank you.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, actually, the proposal that's been in the capital improvement, half of the cost of it is actually extricating the boiler out of the basement. And I think the other, half the cost is the boiler itself.
Yeah.
Because of where they designed it in the first place.
It seemed like a good idea at the time.
I'm sure it was a good idea.
While it's an increased cost and hassle, it's something that's been, we've been aware of.
They're taking it into account.
Actually, the city council went on a tour. Mark and Jason took most of the city council's tour of that particular boiler in the spring.
Yep, showed them the repair we made in the vessel itself. We've already done this once.
Anything else for Mr. Fattato while he's on the hot seat? You know, he'll be there again in a couple of weeks, so. Do you have anything else for us, or just we'll eagerly await your report in two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, moving on to our subcommittee report for tonight. Mrs. Scales is going to update the committee on the October 17th Policy and Personnel Committee meeting.
Thank you. I'm not exactly going to go in order, I'm going to go in the order the way the meeting was. It's easy for me. We first discussed the need to adopt a fuel-efficiency vehicle policy because of the city's desire to apply for the Green Communities Designation and Grant Program. There was some guidance from the Mass Department of Energy Resources on how the policy might look. The policy is an effort to reduce the school district's fuel consumption and energy costs by purchasing only fuel-efficient vehicles when commercially available and practical. Okay? Okay. I make a motion to approve policy DJB Fuel-Efficiency Vehicle Policy.
Before that second, isn't that one of the ones where we're questioning the designation?
I was going to talk about that in the discussion.
Okay, we'll do a blanket motion later on to cover those. So moved, got it?
Second.
All right. There was some discussion on the actual designation. I reached out to MASC for clarification on exactly how that should sound. So, any other comments?
Designation just meaning how the policy, where the policy is labeled in the policy book.
Correct. Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next, we discussed a minor edit to policy JFAAE1, the Attleboro High School CTE Program Admissions Policy. This was brought to our attention through the Coordinated Program Review. It was noted that the change to trimesters and number of blocks offered in the exploratory program were not updated in our policy, hence the need to do so. I make a motion to approve the updates to policy JFAAE1 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Next, we review the changes to policy KFBE1, Procedure of Facility Rental Agreement that was requested by the Policy and Personnel Subcommittee at the last meeting. This policy will be used when renting out the athletic facilities and concession stand. I make a motion to approve policy KFBE1, Procedure of Facility Rental Agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we discuss changes to some of our policies regarding alcohol, tobacco, and drugs that were needed since the governor's signing of the opiate bill into law. The changes had to do with posting the policy online and the development of curriculum to address the use, treatment, education, and prevention of alcohol, tobacco, and drugs. Mr. Regan, would you like to add anything to that?
We refer to the guidance that was put out by the state in putting these documents together, and also from the legal advice that we received, so.
I make a motion to approve the updates to policy IHAMA, Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs.
So moved.
Second.
There was some confusion with the designation, as MASC is using a different code. Again, I have reached out to them to clarify, so we will know exactly how to, what lettering to use. Any other comments?
Question. This and the next policy that we're going to be discussing, did they have the same title? I know that we were confused about classification.
They don't, we're not addressing that.
Okay, thank you.
But this one is correct.
And again, whether or not the designation is just how it's designated in the policy book, so if it changes, it doesn't impact the policy.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I make a motion to approve policy JICH, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drug Use by Students as Presented with Edits.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Again, the title as presented is not correct. That was a little confusion in my pot with communicating with the administration, and we will need to be changed, just as I just stated it. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Finally, as promised, we reviewed many of the policies in Section C. These were mostly minor edits, with the exception of a few. So we'll kind of go through each one. We changed policy CA to better align with the administration's timelines and to enhance the graphic that is used. So I make a motion to approve updates to policy CA Administration Goals as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. CCA was something that was missing in the book. This reflects the duties of the different administrators in the district. So I have a motion to approve the updates to policy CCA Administrative Organizational Chart as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Any comments?
The old one will be missed.
Correct.
The graphics?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. CH deletes the words "regulation" and replaces it with "procedures." So a motion to approve updates to policy CH, Policy Implementation as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. CHB is no longer used by MASC and because BGG, policy BGD, says the same thing, we are updating one and deleting the other. So a motion to approve the updates to policy BGD, which is School Committee Review of Procedures as Presented, and remove policy CHB, School Committee Review of Procedures, from the policy book. Binder.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. CHC was just a minor change of deleting the words "regulation" and placing it with "procedures." So a motion to approve the updates to policy CHC, Procedures Dissemination as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. CM did not change, so we're just going to approve it as an update. Motion to approve the updates to policy CM, Atterboro Public Schools District Annual Report as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. CHE is being added to be in line with what MASC has. So, what did I just say? Motion to approve the inclusion of MASC policy CHA, Development of Procedures, to the Atterboro Public School Policy Binder.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. I think that was my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Scales.
But all the policies will be tabled for two weeks for public input.
Thank you, Mrs. Scales.
You're welcome.
Next, we have open forum. If there anyone in the audience that would like to address the committee at open forum, there being no one, that'll close open forum. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.